Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 25th meeting of Dublin City Council. I'll call this meeting into order. Ann, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Lecliter?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
Ms. Saludo?
Here.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Here.
Mr. Keenan?
Here.
Ms. Saley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Here.
Christina, could you please send the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight Dublin City Council has the pleasure of honoring four outstanding members of our community and the opportunity to thank them for their service on the city's various boards and commissions. Oftentimes, the members of our boards and commissions are the unsung heroes of our community. These are volunteers who give of their time and talents to serve the city in a number of capacities. They serve on the Architecture Review Board, the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Community Services Advisory Commission, the Personnel Board of Review, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Records Commission, and the Tax Board of Review. Several are representatives that are appointed by City Council to the Central Ohio Transit Authority Advisory Panel and the Dublin Arts Council, the Dublin's Convention Visitors Bureau, and the Dublin Foundation. And all of you have our deepest gratitude for your service to this town. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Ehrlich to come forward. No? Chris Kelly? And Patrick Tudorun?
Toddren.
So that we can show you and appreciate, express our appreciation. Unfortunately, Derek Graham and Deborah Graham Gibson, the city's representative of the Dublin Arts Council, could not be here this evening, but we do want to extend our deepest appreciation and gratitude to both of them. I'd like to share a little bit about background on each of our volunteers so that you can get a better sense of their type of expertise on our board and commission, the expertise that they bring to the commissions of our city. I will begin with two of the members from the Community Services Advisory Commission, actually just one now because Derek is not here. These commission members help to make recommendations to council regarding policies and programs related to community services, natural resources, and other related issues. First, I'd like to recognize Mel. Mel began his service in 2009 on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, which merged with CSAC in 2010. Mel also served as vice president and president of the Dublin Senior Board of Directors and president of the Brighton Woods Condominium Association. On the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Mel served as vice chairman and was instrumental in the redesign of the existing tennis courts in Kaufman Park to accommodate pickleball players, to accommodate the pickleball players. Thanks, Mel, for doing that for us. On CSAC, he helped to design and implement a new program called Civil Discourse for seniors at the Dublin Community Recreation Centre. The program engages the public to debate on topics that typically have two opposing opinions. Thank you very much, Mel, for your dedication to our community. Can you, and I don't know if you can pick them up, can you tell us about that program? It's really fascinating. I'm sure people, if they're aware of it, they would attend.
Thank you. Civil discourse is the opposite of what you see on the cable news channels. Where people yell and scream and interrupt each other. What we do is invite a speaker and give that speaker 15, 20 minutes of uninterrupted microphone time. And if you want to make a comment or ask a question, you hold up a number and somebody writes it down on a clipboard. So when the speaker's finished, you call up the other people whose numbers have been called, and they make their comments uninterrupted, and you only give them three minutes, though. And if it's a question, you let the speaker answer. So you're able to talk about something that people will fight about, and you do it civilly. We thought we had a good argument. We invited the chief to talk about body cameras. And we were surprised. It was the greatest informational talk we've heard. We found out things we didn't know about problems and solutions that body cameras give. So we're very happy. So that's civil discourse.
Did you mention how often you meet and...
It's with the construction, it's kind of crazy. We're going for every other month, and we'll get it started.
And what's the easiest place for people to find out information about?
The Dublin seniors.
Great.
Because you should make reservations with the Dublin seniors, obviously no charge, and make a reservation and come in.
Great. Thank you very much, Mel. We really appreciate your service to our community. Pat Toddren. Pat served on the Board of Zoning Appeals, a group that ensures the city zoning code is fairly applied to all properties and grants modifications or variances where the code so warrants. Pat was a, has been a member of the BZA since 2009. He was the vice chair in 2010 and 11. And during his service, Pat had exemplary attendance, was always well-prepared, and was diligent in asking questions that were insightful and helpful to making the determinations on the various cases before the board. He has always shown a professional demeanor and has been extremely supportive of his other board members and the staff. His previous government experience as the superintendent of Permits and Inspections for the city of North Canton provided valuable to his role on the Board of Zoning Appeals. He has also been a volunteer for the Dublin Irish Festival, the Independence Day, and the St. Patrick's Day parades. Thank you for your service, Pat. We very much appreciate your dedication to this town. Chris Kelly. Ms. Kelly served as council's representative to the Dublin Foundation, whose mission is to support the community and its nonprofit organizations by raising, investing, and dispersing funds for the benefit of the community. Chris served two full terms, and her contribution will be everlasting. She also was the organization's president for two years and served on the Emerald Ball Committee, as well as chairing the nominating committee. She developed an orientation structure for new board members and hired the foundation's first administrative assistant during her term as president. Chris continues to support the Dublin Foundation and is a member of the Document Retention Committee, which is working to preserve the foundation's rich heritage for years to come. Thank you for representing us so well, Chris. Thank you. Now, we do have a presentation. One at a time? All right. We'll have you open the doors now. Everybody can sit here. You go take a look. I carry that for you.
A lot about...
My grandson loved this.
It's a pewter clock from the city to express our appreciation and gratitude. We're always on time in Dublin. Thank you very much. Two, one. Chris, there you go. Thank you very much. We appreciate your service. Thank you very much. We appreciate your service. And a picture.
If I may, I want to thank...
You want the microphone back?
No, I just want to thank Amy. I want to thank Amy for getting me interested in Dublin government. She helped us solve a big problem in our condos, and that was my start. So thanks, Amy.
Thank you, Mel. One of the more rewarding things that we as council people get to do because of just the exposure that we have is to meet folks like you and recommend them to participate. And we're always encouraging people to do it, and it's such a wonderful thing when they take advantage of the opportunity. So thank you very much. Okay. Now it is time for a Arbor Day presentation. Paula Chop.
Hi.
Hello.
And you are?
Paula Chop, city forester.
And what do you do?
A little bit of everything. Managed Dublin's street tree program. Right now, we have a little over 24,000 street trees. When I started, there was a little over three. So we've come a long way.
So that's why it is so appropriate to present you with this Arbor Day proclamation?
Yes, it is.
She's our resident Lorax. She's our Lorax.
She's the Lorax. Whereas in 1972, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas in 2016, it marks the 28th year that the city of Dublin has been awarded the status of being a Tree City USA community. And whereas the city of Dublin takes great pride in the aesthetic beauty and the natural resources trees offer to this community. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautifying our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Well, you didn't know they did all this, did you? Good stuff. And whereas the city of Dublin will celebrate Arbor Day on April 30th from 9:00 AM to noon in Coventry Woods Park by handing out free tree seedlings, providing information on pruning and mulching trees, and sharing information on the important role trees play in our community. Now therefore I, Gregory S. Peterson, mayor of the city of Dublin, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 29th as Arbor Day in the city of Dublin, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Thank you very much. Can you explain, everyone, can you explain that what will go on this Saturday in Coventry Woods Park, the reason we're doing it, and how they can participate?
We used to go, we did a lot of Arbor Day celebrations in the schools, and not that I didn't want to, but I was looking for something a little different. So I got on their website at National Arbor Day Foundation, and they said something about having a block party. And I thought that would be a good audience to get everybody involved in. You know, we always do the kids. Last year, we did OU, so we had older kids, but this year, we want to kind of focus on the adults. So the subdivision I picked was Coventry Woods. They were hit pretty hard by the Emerald Ash Bore. They've lost a lot of ash, and that was the first subdivision I thought of. So we have 10 different seedlings, 10 of our trees, that we are going to be handing out. We've got a group coming Wednesday to help us bag them and get them ready to go. We are going to give a demonstration on how to mulch and how not to mulch, because we see a lot of how-not-to-mulches out there. We also are going to give pruning information on how to properly prune. We'll have a sign-up sheet if anybody wants any of us to come and take a look at their property and kind of give them advice. And we're just going to pass out a lot of information.
And what time is that, Paul?
It's from 9:00 to 12:00. It's front of the playground on Coventry Woods Drive.
For people that don't know where Coventry Woods is, it is the southwest corner of the brand Dublin Road Roundabout.
Correct.
And it's just welcome, anyone is welcome.
Anyone is welcome. We have coffee, and cookies, and water, and a lot of information. I also just want to let you know that we did get a growth award this year. That's kind of above and beyond an Arbor Day plaque. We extended our chemical program for insects and diseases within the city. And we also have a, we're using a program called iTree, which collects information about each individual tree, that you can get a lot of economic benefits from it. So we were awarded that last week.
Well, I, you don't know how many people contact me that you have an interaction with, Paul, and you do such a wonderful job for our community as a resource and a sounding word in showing how committed the city is to the trees and the preservation of our green space. So thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you very much.
I agree, Greg, and I want to personally thank you for all the work you've done with the residents that I've encountered. Everybody's very appreciative, and I just think Dublin is so special because we have the ability to have professional foresters come to our individual homes and advise us. And that is something that I don't know that very many communities do, you know, and I appreciate you availing yourselves and your staff to our residents to do that, because so many times, you know, folks have questions, and it's just, you know, it's on somebody else's property, but it's all of our trees, and I really appreciate that.
We attended the Citizen U, and we got four requests to come onto the property. So we're hoping that we get a few more. It kind of hones our skills, too, and keeps us fresh in what's going on.
Great, thank you.
So I'll just echo the same thing. I have personal experience, well, I don't, actually. My husband has personal experience with you. We lost three Austrian pines to blight and a crabapple, and you worked with my husband, Rory Gatos, and tried to get us to a point where we could get a decent tree on that corner that we're on. And you just kind of plugged away with us and kind of put up with us, because we were like, we don't know what to do with these three trees, they're dead. And it was, so I really very much appreciate, just from my own personal experience in working with you and with the city, to make that. And it's a much nicer corner now because of it. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. We'll see you on Saturday.
Thank you very much.
Next thing we're going to talk about is motorcycle safety. Chief, could you maybe come up and give us an idea? I think you launched this idea, and let us know how we got where we are with all this? Sure. You can have whatever you want.
So Motorcycle Safety Month is in May, and we really want to kind of highlight that because Motorcycle Safety Month highlights a couple different aspects of motorcycle safety. First is motorcyclists need to take personal responsibility to be safe. The majority of motorcycle crashes are caused by motorcycle rider error. So motorcyclists need to take the responsibility, get out there and get the proper training. Sergeant Potts here is in charge of our motorcycle unit. Our motorcycle officers have to go through a pretty grueling training course that most people who go through it say it's one of the toughest things they've gone through. And because of that, they are very safe riders, and we would encourage anybody in the motoring public who's a motorcycle rider to do the same. The other part of it is, most motorcycle riders will also say, they don't want to admit that we're the ones that caused most of our crashes, but they also say that the thing they're most worried about is car drivers who are not aware of motorcyclists on the road. And so it's a reminder to the motoring public to be aware of the motorcycles out there and what they have to do to, don't tailgate motorcycles, watch for motorcycles in your mirrors, take a look to the right and left before you change lanes, to help keep motorcyclists safe. So we want to just emphasize that this month.
Thank you, Chief.
And to that end, whereas May is Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, designed to encourage all drivers and motorists to share the road with each other, and whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of transportation for over 200,000 Ohioans and millions of Americans, and whereas road users should never drive, bike, or walk while distracted, as doing so can result in tragic consequences for everyone on the road, including motorcyclists, and whereas a motorcyclist has the same rights, privileges, and responsibilities as any other motorist on the roadway. Because motorcycles are smaller than most vehicles, they can be difficult to see, their size can also cause other drivers to misjudge their speed and distance. And whereas drivers of automobiles should allow a motorcyclist a full lane width, do not share the lane. A motorcyclist needs room to maneuver safely. Motorcyclists can easily be hidden in a vehicle's blind spot, and it is important for drivers to check mirrors and blind spots before switching to another lane of traffic. And whereas drivers should allow more distance, three or four seconds, when following a motorcycle. This gives the motorcycle rider more than time to maneuver or stop in the event of an emergency. And whereas motorcycles are an energy-efficient mode of transportation and are enjoyed by a large number of people across the country who commute to work on motorcycles and enjoy riding motorcycles during their leisure time. Now therefore I, Gregory S. Peterson, mayor of the city of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. That should be 16, 2016, we need to change this. And the city of Dublin encourage all drivers and motorcyclists to share the road to ensure the safety and well-being of all of our citizens. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. You want to make a few comments?
No.
No? There you go. Right off into the sunset. Citizen comments? We don't have anybody that signed it. Did anybody walk past the sign-in sheet, not realize it, and neglect the sign-in, but they'd like to make a comment? Speak now, or forever hold your peace. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. There are eight items on the consent agenda. Does any council member wish removal of any one of those items and have it placed on the regular agenda?
I just have a quick comment about 1816, ordinance 1816.
Is the Ballantre Woods...
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can you make my comments now?
Sure. Do you want to remove it? We can remove it and deal with it just the normal course.
No, no. I'll make a quick comment. On the infrastructure agreement for the Ballantre Woods development, item number two says the developer will also agree to dedicate the right-of-way depicted on the attached exhibit or any temporary construction easements necessary for the construction of Churchman Road and any associated utility improvements at no cost to the city. I'm wondering if that should be "and." Do we want the dedicated right-of-way or the temporary construction easements, or do we want both?
Yeah, we can change that to "and." We would want the option for both of those.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that require us to do anything up here? Should we amend it?
No.
Or we just pick some?
Right. You'll amend it for next time.
Amendment noted.
Okay. Thank you.
Amendment so noted. Anything else, Chris?
Move for approval.
Senator. Ann?
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
I took care of half of the agenda. Second reading, ordinances, ordinance 15-16. Ann?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a cooperative construction agreement between the city of Dublin, Union County, and Franklin County for the construction of intersection improvements at State Route 161, Post Road, and Cosgrove Road.
Dana?
Good evening, members of council. There's no change, obviously, from the report that was in your packet. This is a repeat from the last meeting. No changes to the agreement either. So staff recommends approval.
Council, any comments, questions?
It's a good thing.
Yeah. Ann?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
And Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Ordinance 16-16. Ann?
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to induce the consolidation and expansion by Cardinal Health Inc. of its operations and workforce within the city of Dublin, authorizing execution of an economic development and real estate lease agreement.
Colleen?
Good evening. There are no changes from the first reading introduction, but I can answer any questions that you may have about the details of the agreement with Cardinal Health. In addition, I have to introduce tonight Marino Coltrullo, Coltrullo, sorry about that. He is the vice president of Global Workplace and Corporate Real Estate for Cardinal Health. So I welcome Marino to the podium, and he can also address any questions or concerns that you have.
Marino, you want to come up? Welcome. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you for having me, and I just want to say that I think this is a great opportunity for, and I want to really recognize the city and council for helping us with this opportunity. The nature of work and how we work in corporate environments is changing significantly to a more collaborative environment. And the buildings that we work in and built many years ago, unfortunately, don't keep up with that. And really, this opportunity wouldn't have come about if we didn't get together and recognize that, hey, you know, the one thing that really made this building viable for us was parking. And when we really sat down and looked at what made this viable, what allowed us to really build this base in the city and bring our folks together and create a real collaborative environment, it was parking. And it's kind of, it's a silly thing to think about, but parking is key. And so I want to thank the city for really having the foresight to help us look at that. I think this is an issue that, especially Dublin and other communities, are going to have to continue to tackle. You have aging buildings, aging infrastructure. A lot of the buildings need revamp to make them usable for the corporate environment to create more collaborative environments. And when you do that, it's not just packing people in. I mean, the days of the big offices are gone, but you're creating environments for them to work, places they can come together, different areas to work at. And so the buildings actually can hold more people than are currently there. And what's limiting, what's limiting the availability to put more employees and more workers in these buildings is parking. And so I think if it's something, you know, you can continue to address, I think you'll find the business will continue to come to Dublin, because you have great infrastructure and great atmosphere to work in and, you know, great people to work with. But you've got to be able to park the cars.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the relationship between the city and Cardinal Health is one that we value greatly, and we appreciate your helping us work through this issue with you and get this solved. Council, any questions?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Dan.
Sorry. Go ahead. I just personally want to thank Mr. Coltrullo. We've worked together a lot of years on a lot of different projects, and I really appreciate how he looks at Dublin. I think he's a real advocate for us as a city, as is, you know, the leadership of Cardinal Health, and really appreciate, the one thing I appreciate about Marino is a lot of things, especially the sausage he makes. Actually, he makes real sausage, which is great, by the way. But I really appreciate his candidness in what they need to be successful and challenges us to rise to that occasion, as we should in partnership with our community, be it residents or be it our businesses. So I just want to, I wanted to jump in there and just say, I apologize if I jumped ahead, but I just wanted to say thank you.
Counsel, Mike?
Nope. Got to move for approval. Thank you. Thank you.
Ann?
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ordinance 17-16. Ann?
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Pet People Enterprises LLC to induce it to locate and expand an office and its associated operations and workforce within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Thank you, Ann. Kyle?
Good evening, members of city council. There are no changes to the agreement from the first reading. I'll be available for any questions that you might have. We do have the owner of Pet People LLC, Mr. Mike Elkind, here, and he'd like to give a little bit of background about Pet People, and he'll be on hand for any questions that you may have as well.
Thanks, Kyle. Welcome, Mr. Elkind.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Kyle. Good evening, and I appreciate your time tonight for me to talk about Pet People. My name is Mike Elkind, and my wife, Trish, and I operate the Pet People stores out of Columbus. I have only a few minutes, so I'd like to tell you briefly about Pet People, why we're here, and perhaps answer any questions that you may have. Trish and I started Pet People in 2000 when we purchased three stores in Columbus. We're, it's our home market, so we focused in our early years in the Columbus metro area. And through 2008, we opened another five stores. We have eight stores, or had eight stores in Columbus, all of which are still operating today. With our success there, we moved in 2009 to Cleveland and Cincinnati. We now have 12 stores in that market, or in those markets. In 2013, we moved into Detroit and Indianapolis, where we operate six stores today. And in 2015, the end of last year, we opened two stores in Chicago. So today, Pet People operates 29 stores, which has roughly doubled our store count in the last three years. Our next phase is actually accelerated growth. We anticipate to open eight to 12 stores a year for the next three to four years. So that will again double our store count in the next three to four years. With that growth, our support and office needs have changed significantly over the years. We started in the basement of our Arlington store. Currently, we operate in our, in a 6,000-square-foot office building in Hilliard, which we thought would be all we would need forever. And five years later, we're bursting at the seams there. So today, we're looking for somewhere between 15,000 and 20,000 square feet for our office and warehouse operation. So why Pet People in Dublin? Certainly, Dublin is known for, you know, its culture for business, and we've always heard about it. we've always heard about it. And we've met with your Economic Development Department, who really seem genuinely interested in having Pet People come to Dublin. From our first meeting with Colleen and Rachel, and now Kyle, we appreciated their energy and enthusiasm for our concept, but also a potential Dublin-Pet People connection. That culture that they have in that office is really the culture that we try and do in our stores on a daily basis. It was pretty amazing. So, I congratulate the, the council on that. Secondly, certainly Dublin is known for its continued investment into the infrastructure, which is going to be really important to our stores as we do a little more deliveries. It's a very central location for us, great freeway access that'll be very convenient for our associates to get to and from where they need to be. We have three store, or three to four stores close to Dublin today, with one in, actually in the city of Dublin, in Avery Square. So, with that, as I said, we're looking to expand our operation. We've identified at least one, a location in Dublin that we're interested in. We're doing a lot of due diligence on it. We have long ways to go. But we're exploring all the options related to that, you know, to making that happen. So, with that, I would like to take any questions or anything I can ask for you regarding Pet People.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you for being here. That's quite a success story.
My pleasure. Thank you.
The American dream, right? And counsel, any questions? Tim?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, as a longtime customer of your Dublin store in, in Avery Square, I would congratulate you on what, as a customer, I perceive as, as a culture, I guess, within your store. You know, it's always been a pleasant experience, and I can see why you're successful.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
I was going to echo that as well. I love your store and the caring. I have a very elderly dog, and she was not eating well. And you're, the gentleman that worked there with me to find something that she would eat and that would be healthy for her, he, the level of knowledge was really impressive, and, and the level of caring as well. And I really appreciate that in a store. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that comment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ann?
Mr. Lucklider?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
First reading ordinance, ordinance twenty dash sixteen, Ann?
Authorizing the provision of certain incentive to Cognitive Ventures, LLC to induce it to retain and expand an office in its associated operations and workforce within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Rachel?
Introduction.
Who is it?
Good evening. Economic development has been in discussions with a company by the name of Sports Brain, which is a wholly owned subsidiary, subsidiary of Cognitive Ventures. And we're very proud of this company because they have a, they've had a presence at the Dublin Entrepreneurial Center for a little over a year now, after the president, company president relocated from Chicago. So, as they're preparing to grow and expand, and they've been looking at relocating their headquarters away from Chicago, they, of course, are looking at growing here in Dublin. Sports Brain is a healthcare company making a difference in the sports, military, corporate, and healthcare sectors. And they promote brain safety, and they're also a national leader in concussion testing and comprehensive end-to-end management. So, which is a very pertinent topic these days. And the company president will be here next week to talk a little bit more about what their company does. As part of this project, the economic development agreement, it results in the addition of twenty-one new employees by the end of two thousand twenty. And the offer is for a three-year, twenty percent performance incentive on withholdings capped at twenty thousand dollars over the term of the agreement. And that assumes that the company will execute a minimum five-year lease. And then there's also an option to extend that lease beyond that as the company continues to grow. So, in addition to the performance withholding incentive, the company also is offered a provisioned data cabinet inside of Metro Data Center. This is a new incentive program that we authorized just last year or so that's geared towards tech-related companies such as Sports Brain and others, and is specific to the metro center area where we're looking at office competitiveness and really making those offices more attractive, particularly to companies that are in tech-related fields that can also benefit from the Dublin infrastructure improvements that we're making in that area. So, very excited that Sports Brain is taking advantage of this incentive as well. Beyond that, the state of Ohio has also provided economic development incentives to the company to help retain and expand their workforce here in, in the central Ohio area. And over the five-year term of this project, the city expects to net approximately a hundred and four thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions right now.
Counsel, have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to make a comment. So, I had an opportunity when I went to the Citizen U to speak with Christine, the, the president of the company. She was kind enough to come out and talk with the citizen group about what the deck is about and what, what happens there. And sort of the idea is to sort of graduate out of the deck, right? That's like a big thing. They probably ought to have a party every time that happens, right? But one of the things that really struck me about Christine is, as she moved here from a big giant city like Chicago, her passion for working in Dublin, relocating her company here, and then giving back to our community through working with other entrepreneurs, as well as becoming involved in the overall community, was absolutely commendable. And I just can't tell you how much I enjoyed talking with her. I kind of stole some extra time from her and strayed from my group. I got lost. She had to help me find my back to the group. But anyway, so I, I would strongly encourage you to take a look at their website. They're doing some phenomenal things with, with concussion research and concussion testing. And as a mom of kids who are incredibly active, and sometimes I feel like they get concussions on a daily basis, it's really important work. So, anyway, I just wanted to make those comments, and I'm thrilled that they want to stay here.
Well said. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we will have a second hearing at the main night council meeting. Resolutions, I guess I would make a motion to introduce resolutions eighteen dash sixteen, nineteen dash sixteen, and twenty dash sixteen. And I would also make a motion that we waive the council rules of order to consider them together for purposes of discussion. But I'm going to need to break them out separately for purposes of vote.
Voting, correct.
Is there a second to that? I'm sorry, Mr. Lucklider?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Good evening, council members. As you are well aware, we've had a series of presentations since the beginning of the year on community entertainment districts. And CEDs are a tool to facilitate the establishment of restaurants as part of a larger-scale development or redevelopment project. Originally, staff proposed creating two community entertainment districts. However, given council's strong support and the strong support we've had in our public input meetings, we are now recommending the creation of three CEDs tonight. Additionally, at the council work session we had last Monday, the question was asked as to whether we could include some property in the Sciota North CED, which comprises the Arts Council building. And we just received confirmation late Friday from the Division of Liquor Control that we could include that. And so, you will see at your seat, there's an updated resolution with that additional acreage in the Sciota North CED. So, that's resolution number twenty sixteen. We also made a minor modification to the acreage amount in the Sciota West CED, and that acreage is also reflected in the resolution at your seat. So, I'll just give a quick overview. This is the boundary map for each of the three CEDs. And so, you'll see Sciota North is about a hundred acres now. Sciota East is about ninety-one acres, and Sciota West, seventy-five acres. Again, three separate resolutions are required for approval tonight. And if approved, there would be a new pool of fifteen liquor permits for each separate CED district. So, first, Sciota North, it's grown to approximately a hundred acres now. I've got the rough boundary lines. Again, as requested by council, we have included the Arts Council acreage in this CED. Sciota East CED, we've got the general boundaries, which Bridge Park Avenue, Shamrock Boulevard, Stone Ridge Lane, Riverside Drive, approximately ninety-one acres. And then finally, the Sciota West CED, which we've got bounded by the future pedestrian bridge, future Mooney Street, John Wright Lane, and Corbin Mills Drive. And it's about seventy-five acres. So, next steps, if these three resolutions are approved tonight, city staff will file the legislation, certify copies of the legislation, and the applications with the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Liquor Control will start accepting liquor permit applications after they receive and process this information. They tell us it's usually around thirty days. It's our intention to file all the documents, if approved tonight, by the end of this week, so that they can begin their review. We have been told by Liquor Control that actually getting the liquor permit can be between eight to twelve months, which we have no control over. And I think this is probably a conservative estimate, but another reason for wanting to act on that as quickly as we can. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of resolutions eighteen sixteen, nineteen sixteen, and twenty sixteen. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Ann, I think we neglected to have you read the titles. Do you want to do that now?
Sure. Resolution eighteen sixteen is approving the City of Dublin's application for a community entertainment district, the Sciota West CED generally bounded by the future pedestrian bridge in the north, future Mooney Street in the east, John Wright Lane in the south, and Corbin's Mill Drive in the west, and creating such community entertainment district.
You want to, and we'll vote on that one.
Okay, Ms. Saley? Mr. Lucklider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Resolution nineteen dash sixteen?
This is approving the City of Dublin's application for a community entertainment district, the Sciota East CED generally bounded by future Bridge Park Avenue in the north, Shamrock Boulevard in the east, Stone Ridge Lane in the south, and Riverside Drive in the west, and creating such community entertainment district. Vice Mayor Reiner?
I would like to abstain, as I own property in this particular CED.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider?
Yes.
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ann, resolution twenty dash sixteen?
Approving the City of Dublin's application for a community entertainment district, the Sciota North CED generally bounded by Amaral Parkway in the north, Dale Toller Drive in the east, future Bridge Park Avenue in the south, and North High Street in the west, and creating such community entertainment district. Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Saley? I'm sorry. Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
And Ms. Saley?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm probably not the call. Thank you.
Okay. That does that. Tantrum Theater, Michelle?
Good evening, members of council. Before you this evening are three waiver requests from Ohio University's College of Fine Arts. These are all related to OU's summer theater program, which will make its home within the Abbey Theater at our Dublin Community Recreation Center. I'm going to provide an overview of what the three waiver requests are, but we have this evening with us Rachel Cornish, who's the Director of External Relations with the College of Fine Arts. And she will be here this evening to answer any questions you may have and give a little bit of an overview of what the summer program entails this year. And I'll just invite her up to the other podium. And also with us this evening is Dan Dennis, who is the artistic director of OU's theater, which they have named Tantrum Theater. So, briefly, to go over what these three waivers are, the waivers one and two relate to the serving of beer and wine as part of the, of the theater program. Currently under the code, under chapter thirty-five, this is limited, serving of beer and wine are limited to only the community hall within the recreation center after seven-thirty PM, and only on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evenings. When someone does rent the community hall, they have additional requirements under the rental agreement. And those two, two of the requirements are that there needs to be a special duty officer or officers on site, whatever may be needed, and that they must contract with a caterer or other company that holds a license to serve alcohol. So, waiver number one, this request is for alcohol service of beer and wine as part of a reception event that will take place Saturday, June eighteenth. And this would be for, from six-thirty to eight PM. And the location is in the lobby that's adjacent to the theater, and also the second floor open area outside the staff offices as you walk up the steps outside the theater. And again, as noted in the rental agreement, they would, they would also have to comply with the additional requirements. And we, this area of the rec center hat, was originally designed so that you could restrict this area from individuals, you know, passing through there if you were having a private reception. Waiver request number two also relates to alcohol service. This is for the, the theater, serving of beer and wine in the Abbey Theater for the evenings of Tantrum Theater's performances on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evening from seven-thirty to ten-thirty PM. And again, they would have to comply with the other requirements that are in the rental agreement. Then the final waiver relates to extending rental hours. This is also limited within that same code section. And this current code limits extension of Abbey Theater rental hours to midnight on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evenings. Due to OU's need for rehearsal and performance times on other evenings as well, they are asking that this be extended for additional days of the week. And this is, would be for any day of the week, assuming sufficient notice to our staff and staff availability, which we've already met with OU and gone over what their plan would be. And we believe we can meet all their extended evening dates as they have them set now. With that, I can answer any questions that you may have related to any of these.
Thank you, Ms. Cornish.
Yes.
Anything you want to share with us? And, you know, this is a really unique relationship that we have with OU. And could you maybe sort of give us an overview of the program, and then specifically, anything you need to know?
Yes, I'd be happy to, actually. It's my pleasure to be here this evening. First, I would like to thank all of the city staff and David Guyan at the Arts Council and City Council so far for all of the cooperation and really wonderful partnership that we've had in trying to bring a professional theater to Dublin. The program is, has been about two years in the making so far. Started not last spring, but the spring before that, as the theater division at Ohio University had been dissolving its relationship with a theater in Cape Cod, and that relationship had been held for about fifty-seven years. And many people don't know this, but professional theater programs, for accreditation purposes, are required to have a relationship with a professional theater company. Many universities do this by beginning their own company, much like many medical schools partner with or have their own teaching hospital, like doctors, artists often learn by the apprenticeship model. And so, a lot of people got into the same room and said, why not think about Dublin as a place to start your own professional theater company? So, two years later, here we are. And we have about ninety-nine members in our company this summer. Only thirty-three of them are students, the rest are professionals. So, we have a lot of people coming in from Seattle, from Chicago, from New York City, artists that are well-known and established in their careers that will bring what we hope will be world-class theater into the Dublin community, as well as provide a great training ground for our students. And in addition to that, we will be offering three educational programs that have the opportunity to reach about sixty K through twelve students here. The first one, Very Safe by Promises in Stage Combat, dealing with swords and dagger work, Shakespearean type of stage combat, some other combat as well, but all, all taught with a certified, somebody certified in stage combat. Second one is some mask work. And the third one deals with, we're calling it the Little Kids Ensemble. It's six through thirteen-year-olds creating an ensemble-based theater piece. And we present three shows this summer. The first is Little Shop of Horrors, which many people know. The second one is a new play called Tammy Faye's Final Audition. And the third one is an Irish play called Dancing at Lunasa that will coincide with the Irish festival.
Fantastic.
Yeah. Can I answer any questions for all of you?
Questions, anyone?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Dennis, do you want to add anything?
I would simply add that I think it's a great opportunity that's brought us all together. And I'm really pleased to start something, you know, we're finishing something with the Montemoy Theater that lasted fifty-seven years. And I kind of think of this as, as a game changer for us as well, and bringing our communities together. So, I'm excited about that.
We are too. Fantastic. Thank you.
I think you'll find that the demographics here in Dublin is, really embrace this wholeheartedly, and will, it'll be, it'll be a great fit. So, thank you.
Can we vote on these all at one? Or do you need to vote, we need to vote three times?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion.
Greg, I'd like to ask just a few questions, if I may. Michelle, this is a great program, and I am very excited about it. Can you tell me the hours of the teen lounge on the evenings that we are talking about?
I'll ask Matt to answer that question if he is aware. Nine-thirty? Okay, Saturday's and Sunday's eight o'clock, and then nine-thirty other evenings.
I have just a little bit of concern about the teen lounge being directly across the hall from where we're going to hold the cocktail hour, for lack of a better term. I'm, I'm wondering what our plan is. I don't know that those two adjacent uses are entirely appropriate with one another.
We did provide within the packet sort of our plan for making sure that no one accesses that reception area unless they're an invited guest. So, and we would have special duty officer there, OU would have special duty officer or officers there as well to make sure that that doesn't occur.
You know, the, the one tallow room is adjacent there, and it looks, you know, it has a double door. Was there any thought to, to moving that event inside the, the tallow room at all?
I believe that the, all the tallors were booked, so that's why we went with the lobby area. And as I had mentioned before, we really designed phase, this phase of the rec center to accommodate this type of...
I understand the accommodation. I'm just worried about the adjacent uses. I...
Are you worried about student or teens accessing the party, or just sort of the atmosphere?
The atmosphere. No, I, I'm sure that we will keep tight reins on, I'm sure it will be... No, I, I'm sure that we will keep tight reins on, I'm sure it will be excellent run and executed perfectly. I just, you know, when your child is at the teen center, at their, at the teen lounge, at the rec center, you kind of have an expectation of what that space might look like, and we're changing what that space looks like.
I don't think that the, the teen lounge being across the hall, I certainly understand the point, but I would also hope that, you know, some, these will be attended by all ages, I would think, for the most part, or could be. So you could very well have, you know, the teens in that environment as well, I mean, not independently from the teen lounge. So just making sure that they're accompanied or visually accompanied as they come into the area that's screened off is going to be critical.
Certainly different expectation when you go to the theater and the...
I think I could just add that I think we can add a buffer between the hall, the main entrance to the rec center where the teen lounge is, that goes down to the hallway to the Abbey Theater, and create a buffer there at the end of the hallway, and then have another barrier at the end of that hallway down towards where the Abbey Theater is to create that, create a void area so that it separates the two.
I'd like to see us do something kind of creative, maybe a space with a curtain that's drawn, you know, that would make the entrance one more grand for what you're doing, but two, that would provide some more visual separation so that you're not, from the teen lounge, you're not looking into a cocktail party. To me, that's problematic. I would really encourage us to have a visual barrier, not just a physical, you know, barrier by our police staff or ticket collectors or whatever that might be, but I, I'd like us to look at something creative and something very nice. I, it's going to be a lovely program, there's no doubt about that. But I do want to protect our teens in the lounge across the hall at the same time.
It's a great idea. We'll work with OU on looking into something of that nature.
Thank you, appreciate the indulgence.
Is that it? Anybody else? All right, make a motion that we approve the three waivers requested.
Second.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Luckleyter?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Staff comments, Dana?
Only three items, I think, first and foremost, you were all made aware last week of the announcement of the July 4th entertainment, Joan Jett and Casey and the Sunshine Band will be a dual headline event at the July 4th celebration. And then I want to thank Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor Reiner, Councilmember Chris Amoros Grooms for accompanying us last week to the Research Triangle Park in North Carolina and University of North Carolina Centennial Campus. Also want to thank members of Todd Holley Superintendent Schools and Chris Valentine's Board Member, School Board Member who went with us, as well as members from Ohio University. I thought it was a, a good tour. We'll provide some information from staff's perspective to council on that as we continue to formulate information with O'Brien Atkins, and certainly would defer to them for their comments at Roundtable if they have any. And then the last, as I just want to point out, that the, in every three years, as you know, we do the citizen survey, and it has been our tradition as, as part of that or on the heel of that survey to also conduct a police and safety survey as well. This, this gets into more detail as to police and safety services. It also contributes to our accreditation process in addition to providing back very valuable information to our police and safety services. So we'll ask that Dublin residents voice their opinion by going to dublinohiousa.gov/policessurvey. And Chief, I meant to ask you, when, when is the timeframe for that survey? Okay. But nonetheless, we, the, the key point here is we're going to be sending out a postcard to residents about this survey, and the idea is to drive them to the website to participate in the survey. Marty Saperstein Associates will be assisting with us with that, but it will not be a calling type survey. It will be one that we ask that residents take online on an ongoing basis for a period of time. So just want to make you aware of that, if you saw that come through the mail, and that's all I have. Thank you.
You said that, that will be a postcard, will that also go out through our, you know, email blast distribution?
Oh yeah, we'll, we'll leverage all the social media aspects and put it on the website as well.
Thanks.
That's it? That's all you got? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, one more item. I, I asked Jennifer Radler if she would mention the recent action regarding the Jacaman rezoning.
Yeah, we've provided council with a copy of a complaint. Paul and Mary Jacaman filed a complaint in the Ohio Supreme Court last week against the Union County Board of Elections. It's on the certification of the referendum that we've discussed before. So we will continue to keep you apprised of the status of that.
Okay, thank you. I guess we're to our reports. P&amp;Z, Amy?
Nothing really significant to report at this point. I know that our, my P&amp;Z colleagues are looking forward to our dinner meeting on the 16th of May, I believe. Is that the right date? It's, it's a Monday in there.
Sorry, the what again?
The, the, we're going to have a meeting, a joint meeting with P&amp;Z?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
You had a deer in the headlights look right then. Anyway, looking forward...
I did not check out. I was listening.
Looking forward to a great dialogue. That's all I have for P&amp;Z.
Do you mean that just, that was just in the packet? We have a question about one of the memos that was in the packet, it's more of a staff comment thing, so maybe we just address that now?
Okay, that would be great. I thought the Court Services Quarterly Reports was kind of fascinating in a, in a strange sort of way, but I had a question. We, in, in March, we had 20 void citations, which, January, we had zero, February, we had five, and in March, we had 20. And I didn't know what a void citation was and why we have been having such an increase.
Michelle, you have any information on it? That's okay, if you don't, we'll, we'll check and get back to you on that.
I'll give this to you, and you can take the peek. Thanks. Sorry, Greg, continue on.
Then we're back, we're back to Administrative Committee. Mike?
There's a couple items. Council completed Dan's review last week, week and a half ago, I guess now. Dana, you have your written review in hand, and Council has a meeting scheduled with you on May 11th for the one-on-one?
Yes, sir.
And so we're looking forward to that. Council should get ready with their questions. And CSAC is a work in progress, which we had a little discussion about it this evening, and that continues to move forward, and stay tuned. That's all.
Don't go anywhere. Finance?
Finance. Earlier this evening, we covered, we covered some, a lot of history on our healthcare plan. We have a second meeting coming up. What's the date, Dana? It's May or June?
June.
June.
I have it right here. June 13th.
And we'll have a lot more, we'll have a lot more meat on the bone to deal with there at that, at that juncture. There's a lot of, a lot of decisions, I think, that will have to be made, and, and we may still even be kind of out in left field, not knowing what some of the rules are going to be unless the, unless we hear from the feds.
Correct, that's correct, yes.
Okay. We have a tax incentive review meeting tomorrow at 4 o'clock. I encourage those of you that were interested in how that process works to attend. It shouldn't be more than 30 minutes, but there's a lot of good information, and give you an opportunity to ask the folks to deal with that day in, day out, as well as our county auditor, I believe, will be there. And I think that's all I have for, under finance. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Public Services Committee, Amy?
There's nothing, thank you.
Tim, your run here on the next three, First Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission?
Well, with respect to Morpsey, I don't mean to suggest that the commission doesn't engage in meaningful work, but there's nothing that is standing out in my memory unless Dana recalls something I don't.
Excuse me, just the upcoming state of the region that's, that's going to be happening, and I don't have the date of that in hand, but you all received an invitation to that, and I think we did get confirmation from any of you on that event.
Okay, the Regional Planning Commission, Tim?
I think that's what we just did. Logan Union Campaign? Nothing to report.
And how about the US 33 Innovation Corps or Group?
We have not met since the last council meeting, I don't believe.
We have a meeting coming up.
Okay.
We have a meeting coming up.
Has that trailed on?
It's a calendar. See, it's the last Friday of the month, so...
There's always a meeting coming up.
Yeah, there always is.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. John, Dublin Arts Council?
Hey, I just want to thank the staff and my colleagues for helping us get the Dublin Arts Council in the set, and I think it's going to really mean a lot, and it will, I'm sure, impact that group financially, in a financially successful way. I want to thank you for attending the garden party, and it was a wonderful event, and Dave Guyan and his staff are doing a great job. I think they set a record, I'm not sure, for attendance, and there was some very, very wonderful items at the auction, so it was a great night. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Dublin Board of Education, Chris and Christina?
So we met on the 13th. We spent the majority of the evening talking over the library and parking garage. We talked about a few other things, but that was really the, the gist, the meat of the meeting. Do you want to add to that?
Much of what we talked about was pursuit of a STEM sort of facility that schools might be looking at, and it is really, I appreciated it in that meeting. And then when we went to North Carolina and we saw the early college, high school, and the STEM school, really reinforced some great things, great creative things out there for different educational opportunities. What I was struck by, by our trip, was that it wasn't the place for the best and the brightest exclusively. It was a place for kids that wanted to work hard, kids that wanted to succeed, kids that wanted an opportunity. And so, we spent some time talking about that as well, and I think the schools are really headed in a creative direction of the next, our next addition to our educational opportunities in the community.
It's, yeah, and it's, it's just such a fantastic operation. I saw a, a ranking of high schools in the state of Ohio. All three Dublin high schools are in the top 30 of the best high schools in the state of Ohio. It's just a, and you know, when you think about the people that have been at that podium in the business-friendly atmosphere, and then you couple that with a school system that is unparalleled, it's really fantastic things that are going on here in Dublin. Sarah Ott, anything you want to talk to us about, about the Washington Township Trustees? I have nothing to add, so I will leave it to you. Anything?
Good.
There you go, that's all we needed to hear.
There you go.
There you go, there you go. Council Roundtable, we're going to start down here tonight. Amy?
I am really excited about the Tantrum Theater. I think that's going to be a great addition. You mentioned that there are going to be a lot of people coming and going at the rec center, and I would just invite everyone to be cognizant of the fact that our rec center sits right in the middle of a neighborhood, and there's certain expectations for peace and quiet, and I know that young people, particularly theatrical young people, can get really excited, and we want them to be excited, but inside the rec center and then outside, remember where we are. Thank you. The Tax Incentive Review Council meeting, I just wanted to say for the new council members, that is a great meeting. It's very quick, but it really goes into the weeds about how TIFs work and how everybody gets paid and how the taxes flow back and forth, and it's always a good opportunity to get a chance to meet with the folks, the auditors, from the auditor's office and ask them any questions. Looking forward tomorrow night to the neighborhood leadership meeting. I always enjoy attending those whenever I can. I think that's a really key thing for council to attend if we can, just because it is such a great way to keep in touch with our constituents. And then I had offered Ann a date to meet with whoever wants to talk about iPads and how to use them to do our work, and if somebody can't make it that night and they have another day, I'm happy. I think 30 minutes tops, we could, it's really simple once you get used to doing it, and I think you'd enjoy it very much if you did, because...
Why are you looking at us?
I'm, I'm just looking around the room, not, not, but it's just so nice, you know, I have, this, this is what I carry to council, and I don't have all that paper, so it's wonderful. Anyway, so the 5th of May, I think, is the date that Ann picked out, but again, any other day that somebody needs the help, I am, I'm happy to be here for you. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Tim?
Thank you. Both Dana and Jennifer mentioned, I'll use a generic term, the appeal that was filed by the Jackmans with respect to that rezoning. And in connection therewith, on April 12th, I went to Marysville to attend the hearing, the Board of Elections hearing regarding this matter, and I, I was only able to attend the morning part of that hearing, it went all day. And I, I left being impressed with how fairly the hearing was being conducted, and of course, without knowing the outcome, that was my perception. And of course, the, the fairness was demonstrated by the Chair of the Board of Elections, who, as it turns out, was the lone negative vote. It was a three-to-one vote in favor of allowing the referendum to proceed. And so, you know, my hat's off to the Union County Board of Elections, and how they handled that, that's in contrast to the December 23rd rezoning hearing that was conducted by the Jerome Township Trustees, which I also attended. And by the way, I should point out that I was not attending this Board of Elections hearing in any official capacity, just as an interested party, if you will, but the, as I said, in contrast to the December 23rd Jerome Township's rezoning hearing, which, if I didn't say it earlier, was an affront to democracy and an embarrassment to the Jerome Township residents. I think that was very unfortunate. Anyway, on a more positive note, on April 16th, on Saturday, that Saturday at Jerome High School, together with a couple of my colleagues, attended and participated in the Dublin Chamber of Commerce's Annual Community Champions Awards, recognizing students for their volunteer service. I've done that for several years, I'm, I'm always grateful for the opportunity to attend and participate. That's a very rewarding experience. I believe it recognizes students in, from grades four through 12. I think it begins in, in the fourth grade, and these young people are just amazing, what they accomplish, the, the hours that they devote, in, in the spirit of volunteerism, it's, it's, it's very inspiring. And then also, together with several of my colleagues, attended on April 20th the Legends Luncheon, which I'm happy to say that the city of Dublin is a significant sponsor, with proceeds of that particular event benefiting our local Nationwide Children's Hospital. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. John?
Yeah, I just want to say how excited I am about the OU Theater Program. Coming from a very highbrow East Coast town, and then coming to Dublin, this should add another laurel wreath to our creative class ranking, so thank you for bringing that cultural endeavor and entertainment to our city. I want to thank Dana and his staff. The trip to Raleigh was very intense, covered government, academic, and business working together, and, and the people you invited were probably the right people. We had school members, the OU team, and our own staff, and covered some amazing things. We stopped in at Ryan, O'Brien Atkins, who you remember from 2006, as also planning our future and long-range planning. And I have to say that this trip probably was let's look into the future for Dublin for another 30 years and see what we can gleam out of this Research Triangle to keep our city the more, or maybe the most advanced city between the East and the West Coast, which it's been rated. So, great trip, very interesting. The tour of the frontier, I thought, was, it was an innovation and collaborative workspace. Was really interesting because they took a, sort of an unused building, and, and every once in a while, we'll get a few vacancies, and they took it, and it, it really sort of was a spinoff of an innovation space, just really neat. And, and it gave our staff a lot of opportunities to explore really an interesting concept here in our own city. So, and I don't want to bore you with this, I think it's unfortunate sometimes we talk too much, but the STEM schools were fantastic. If you haven't thought with, or was aware with, with STEM, it's science, technology, engineering, and math. As you know, we're not the leaders anymore than we were after World War II. Doing research on this, I found out 30% of Finland's graduates are STEM graduates. They're the leading country in the world for producing these kind of people. So technologically, we want to stay way ahead of everybody. So technologically, we want to stay way ahead of everybody else. And so it was just a great trip. You guys did a great job. It was very intensive and it was bang, 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 new ideas, new ideas. So it was just a really great environment to be in. So it was a trip well worth thinking, so thank you.
How will the information, just excuse me, but how will the information that you guys gathered and that staff gathered be sort of downloaded towards the rest of us who weren't able to attend?
That'll probably be handled with a beer over at the Brazen Head, I think, some night. I'm sure Dana-
I think the O'Brien Robinson folks are going to come beginning of June sometime and I think we, the indication to me was that all of those discussions would happen collectively of where we would go from there.
The staff in OU stayed over an extra day to do a more of an in-depth review of some thoughts, generating ideas, I think a little bit more touring and we will report back on that to Council Member Amoros-Grooms' point when O'Brien Atkins comes back.
Is that it, John?
That's it. Thank you.
Chris?
Yes, a few things. Wanted to mention Mr. Hadaka's beautiful cherry blossom luncheon was wonderful and had the opportunity to talk with him there and also the luncheon for the Legends Luncheon and really appreciate that invitation and they're doing great things. He was telling us on the way home from the luncheon that they are one of the few part makers for the new NSX and really exciting opportunities and things that they're, they're doing of making some very specialized parts. So fascinated by that and appreciate the opportunity. Community Champions Award was on the 16th and I got to present award to a young lady, Nari Johnson, and she was fabulous, really, so bright and appreciated that opportunity that the chamber provided. At our council workshop on the 18th, the Business After Hours on the 19th at State Bank was really well attended and it's a great building that arguably is one of our first pure Bridge Street buildings that was built. We kind of, the nursing, nursing facility across the street, we kind of pushed it into Bridge Street-esque, but it really was before Bridge Street was, that zoning was in place and State Bank was one of the first. So great to see how well that that worked out for them. Again, the Legends Lunch with Johnny Miller, I thought that was fascinating. He's going to be such a great honorary for the, for the memorial. I think he's going to bring a lot of energy to that. And the trip to North Carolina, as John mentioned, was fabulous on the 21st. Christine and I had the opportunity to speak to the Rotary the morning of the 22nd and really appreciate that opportunity. They wanted to hear about our first 100 days in office. And I was struck, you know, they were asking about time commitment and I had counted up that I'd been to 57 events in the first 100 days. So it's been busy, but the first 100 days have certainly been fulfilling and I appreciate the opportunity. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Christine?
A request. Homer, will you send this out digitally to us, please? Will you send this out digitally to us, please? Thank you, that way I can recycle that. Did you want to?
One more thing. We are in the midst of greatness here this evening because Joe and John are going into the Hall of Fame at our beloved Dublin High School, so I had to embarrass them. I'm really excited for you guys and that's a great honor, well deserved. Congratulations.
Nice, well done. Totally stole my thunder. No, it's all good. I'm not going to repeat anything you said, I promise, except I do want to also express my excitement for the Tantrum Theater. This is a little-known fact that me, being the introvert that I am, was actually originally a theater major at Otterbine when I first went to college. Didn't last that long. So I have a special place for theater in my heart, so I'm super excited and I thoroughly plan on torturing my children by bringing them. So I'm very excited about that.
That's a shameless audition.
That's all I have, thank you.
One other comment. I want to wish the mayor a happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Very good.
Yeah. Stopped counting a long time ago. Mike?
Well, on that note, I'd just like to wish Steve Smith a happy 80th birthday. Oh, was it 80 or 70? Oh, yeah. It seems like 80. They had a wonderful gathering at Jennifer's house and had a big turnout and I know everybody enjoyed themselves there, so hats off to him and happy birthday to Steve as well. I wanted to, I wanted to mention, I wanted to thank Chief for his input at the Ohio Collaborative. We've been meeting about once a quarter. Chief has really provided a lot of valuable input into the policies and procedures for excessive use of force, lethal force. We're working on body cams right now and dispatching is an issue and our own Jay Somerville addressed to the Ohio Collaborative Group last week and as always, Jay did a fabulous job. In fact, his credentials and resume went on for about 10 minutes and I told him that I hope he wasn't looking for a raise, but in any event, Jay has certainly lent quite a bit of expertise here and reflected well on the city. So thank, thank you, Jay, for that. Finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, I know we've all had a chance to read these minutes, but I just wanted to give a special shout out to Jennifer Roush, Steve Smith Jr., the BZA meeting, they got, they got worked over pretty good by Attorney Loveland as I read the minutes, probably unfairly. And I just wanted Jennifer to know that it wasn't lost on myself or probably most of council who had an opportunity to read that. Steve Smith Jr. jumped up and from what I can read in the minutes, really did a nice job, really defending, defending that side of it and anyway, I just wanted to make, make a note of that. And remind everybody that your ethics filings are due on May 16th and welcome aboard with the ethics filing train, so that's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. I just, I also would like to thank Mr. Hadaka for the lunch that he put on with us. It was the first time I've got to spend a considerable amount of time with him and then when they also attended the Legends Luncheon. And Council General Wada is a very charming man and really a fantastic partner. He's looking forward to other opportunities to come down and spend time with us and we talked about things of that nature. And I'd like to thank John for coming up with the idea of the prints for the cherry trees and the gifts that we were able to present them. They have sent me notes thanking me and they were very appreciative and it was absolute top-shelf event and I think that the gifts that we presented them with were very appropriate. And John and I, when we, I know several of us were at the Legends Luncheon, John and I were at the reception before the luncheon started and John was able, in John's way, to get the Council General of Japan and Mr. Hadaka sandwiching Jack Nicklaus in a picture, which they seemed to very much enjoy, so I appreciate, John, your efforts in doing that as well. I think with that, hearing no other concerns or comments, Amy?
Thank you. I apologize, we're going to try to get out of here early, but you said something about the historic building and that, and it reminded me of something that I wanted to raise up to the group. We have a limited number of historic structures in our town and I know that we have the new not-for-profit group that is looking at ways to preserve our historic structures, but legally speaking, we are very limited what we can do to encourage the preservation of our historic structures and when these structures suffer from, you know, what I call benign neglect because I don't think anybody does it on purpose, but we know that they, buildings deteriorate over time. I know that other cities have provisions and I know Arlington has one because I'm very familiar with this house. They require that three, you can renovate a historic house, and I don't know if this is true in their, in their business buildings or not, but you can renovate a building, but you have to leave three walls standing. And so there's a house that we drive by all the time and what, what happened was the family moved in and wanted to remodel it to serve their, you know, modern family and the city required them to do the renovation in such a way that three walls stayed standing so that at the end of the renovation, the house looked identical and it preserved the historic integrity of the structure. And so I was curious if there were things that we could look at and I don't know if we have any remedies, but if we do, I'm really interested in pursuing them. I don't know, I know there's some tax credits that can be had for people and that, you know, may be something in terms of education, but if there's anything we can do to try to compel people to preserve our historic structures because they're dwindling and I don't want to see our historic downtown go away. So that's, thank you for indulging me. I'm sorry to keep you guys a couple extra minutes, but I wanted to throw that out there.
Just one other comment. I was thinking as I was, as we were at Raleigh Durham, it's fantastic, Research Triangle with these STEM schools and all this and as I was sitting there, I was thinking, you know, it's, we have an amazing city, being designated Creative Class City and the only city in the central United States. All the rest are on the East Coast and the West Coast. And, you know, I was just sitting there, I was thinking, God, you know, these guys really have an advanced thing going on here. And then I thought, you know, Austin, Texas is a cool city, but, you know, they didn't make the cut. Chicago didn't, Boulder didn't, Denver didn't, Dallas didn't. So we've got a lot going on here and a lot to be proud of that we have to continue. And I was just, you know, after seeing all that, I know, Chris, you know, it was really an amazing city, but I was thinking, gosh, they didn't make the cut and we did. It's just a heck of a compliment to our people, our staff, our past city councils. Thank you.
I was struck that when we got to NC State, NC State has 34,000 students and I was walking next to Dr. Hoadley and I said, you run a school district that's half the size of NC State. They have over 15,000 students and it was striking to, you know, see what they're doing. I thought that was fantastic.
On that positive note, we stand adjourned.